Okay.
Do you have to call order? The Northern City Council meeting Monday, October 14th, 7:00 PM. Martin, would you like to...
I want to try something different here, just real quick. I had a seminar last weekend. I've been part of training development for years. I started going through all my old little stories. So I thought I'd start with stories tonight. I think that's good. And it was an increase in vocal set and voice choice. This one's about shoe salesmen, a company. And the, we'll call the company Viking Shoe. And they had a boss named Dave. And he went and hired this individual. They went through training and they went through all their product information and so on. Got certified and trained to sell shoes. And so they came to Dave. And Dave gave us territory and it was India. So he went out to India. He got off the plane in India, went down to Tarmac. He looked over India, walked around a little bit, ran to the phone, picked up the cell phone, and called Dave and said, "Dave, how could you send me here? This is the worst possible place you could send me. Nobody here wears shoes. I can't sell shoes here." Of course, Dave says, "Just use what you've learned, you know, sir. Use your sales techniques." Other guy come up, went on, tried to do the best he could, ended up getting fired very quick. So then Dave goes out and hires another guy. And trains him and goes to go up certification there. Then he says, "Hey, you've got India. Come over to India." And got off the Tarmac, got down off the plane, looked over India, walked around, got on the phone with Dave and said, "Dave, thank you for sending me here. This is the greatest place you could send me. Nobody here wears shoes. I could sell more shoes here than anybody ever." So it is a perception thing. I think we've got to look at that, learn, it's an attitude, basically, how you handle things. And there's a lot of different things. You know, there's there are people that are fully naked all the time. And then there are people that are positive people, would make the things to say. And we should always be listening for the positive people to hear what you say and listen to that. So let's power heads and pray for that. More than thank you this evening to help us be here, to be given this wonderful community. Help us to open our ears and listen to all the things that people need. Very positive people all the time, but have some things to say that we need to listen and take notice of. And thank you for the wonderful community and the safety and just the ability, the responsibility and the honor to help move this community forward. As I've said before, we're number 42. Please help us to get to top 10 this next time and help us to be the best we can at all times. Guys, pray for it.
Amen, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, please call order.
Jesus.
Here.
Bonten.
Here.
Holtz.
Here.
Wern.
Here.
Eastland.
Here.
Serena.
Here.
Seven person.
Thank you very much for your consideration and motion and the Secretary of Brutus presented. Council meeting minutes, September 23rd, 2019. Financial reports, September 2019.
Motion to approve it, Mr. President.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? I understand. Full. Okay, thank you. At this time, if you wish to address council, please step forward. State your name and address for the record and a friendly reminder. Five minutes time.
Larry Tripp, 1127 Sable Street, North Canton, Ohio. As many of you know, I like to start or end my remarks with a little tidbit. Tonight is no exception.
Start Mr. Tripp's clock over. Hey, Pat, where's the shoes money for now?
I can sleep long enough, Pat.
Well, it needs to get into the records.
Okay. My boy.
I'm sorry, you're... You can do like this part. This is a little bit newer. It's a little bit less, takes up less space. You might like it a little bit better.
Thanks, Pat. Okay, Larry Tripp, 1127 Sable Street, North Canton. As many of you know, I like to start or end my remarks with a little tidbit. Tonight is no exception. This one is titled, "Does This Sound Familiar?" As I walked one day with my father, he suddenly asked me, "Besides the song of birds, do you hear anything else?" Yes, I answered, "The noise of a wagon." Excellent.
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking with the mic.
Hold the mic down. Larry, hold it down, Georgia. There you go.
Excellent, he said. And it's empty. Empty? How do you know if we are, if we haven't seen? Very easy. Because of the noise it makes. The emptier the wagon, the greater the noise it makes. Since then, when I see and hear North Canton council members bragging and patting themselves on their backs with minor accomplishments, using slander and name calling, intimidation, bullying, belittling, and retaliation, I seem to hear my father's voice, "The emptier the wagon, the louder the noise it makes." Very good for some members of this council, which starts with council president and resonates to other members. September the 9th, returning to my chair after public speaks, I hear a noise of evidence coming from a council member. Dear God, yeah, can we have some relevant comments? If misuse of taxpayer dollars paid to council members for mismeans or not even prepared for means is not relevant, I guess I don't know the meaning of the word. However, hearing this empty remark sure offers me a reason to thank each challenger for this year's election and in their expertise. How often, with the exception of message to read up and revoke, does a committed chairperson at meetings of the whole or council meetings introduce their legislation with perhaps one sentence and then immediately turn the discussion over to the Director of Administration or the Finance Director? Why? Very simple. Council members are not prepared in any noise they make is one of their penis. Some say meaning, name-calling, and unlabelled sexism. Drift back in time to the ill-fated or someone secretive city North Canton school board meeting at the end of May of this year. Our council now consists of five councilmen and two councilwomen. The councilwomen have chaired perhaps two most powerful committees, one, finance and planning, two, community and economic development. Yet, in spite of supposedly leading the two most powerful committees in the city, neither councilwomen attend the meeting. Why? Perhaps a hint of sexism by their colleagues, like they're perhaps not united, or perhaps they're not even knowing of the meeting. Of course, these councilmen would not believe this sexism, as their voice vote is needed to approve one's absence from meetings or to cover one's back when the country meeting is not prepared. Do I believe any city official sitting before me is a sexist? Absolutely not. Do I believe there might be, do I believe there might be some city before me that chair might believe that there are some council members who may hinder the growth of civility within these chamber walls? Absolutely. In closing, I would like to thank the deposit board for recruiting my voters a couple of weeks ago. I have personal gratification in having people stop me while taking my daily walk, or stop me by my house as I sit outside and we discuss North Canton government affairs. Especially happy that I know I've changed a few votes for the better, for a better functioning government. Thank you, Mrs. Wilder, Stroya, and Matheny, for your emergence as very viable candidates for the office seat. Obviously, each of you sense a change in government is needed in ways more than one. You know what my vote is. Lastly, anyone with the smallest knowledge of diversity should have name-calling. You know name-calling is wrong. Keep thinking I'm a sexist.
I thank you for that, Mr. Larry.
I know it took about 20 seconds to get this thing going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Glenn Sabre Jr., 340 Reed Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. Is it coming through okay? Test, test. Can you hear it now? No? Can you hear it? Glenn Sabre Jr., 340 Reed Avenue Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. Came tonight to speak on a couple of issues. Number one, last week I spoke about ordinance 66-200 for 2019 regards to the fact that it was never even mentioned at any of the council meetings in regards to the company that this contract was with, nor the amount of the contract. So, I did receive that contract from Law Director Fox. I appreciate that. But I'd like to read that into the minutes tonight because, like I said, it was never mentioned at any of the meetings. So, the company is at Netplus out of Stowe, Ohio. And the amount of the contract is $113,940 for one year's worth of service as far as providing protection for your network. I noticed that that signed ordinance is now available on your website. I go to it, all I see is the ordinance. I don't see the associated contract with it. I'd like to see that with it because without it, the public has no idea who the contract's with nor the amount. Is it unusual that the contract's not associated with it? I didn't know for sure. So I went back to last year, ordinance 68-2018, when he went into a professional service agreement with the building service department. And that ordinance out there is two pages long clustered, another 12 pages of the actual professional agreement that has the company name and the amount of the contract and everything like that. So, I would appreciate if you could get that contract for ordinance 66-2019 attached to that ordinance so that the public is well aware of the cost that's being incurred there. The other thing pretty much dovetails on what Larry said. I was not at the September 9th meeting. I was a little bit disgusted when I read the transcript. Complete lack of decorum. When any of us come to speak at public, we're given five minutes to speak. And it was mind-blowing that we had the floor for five minutes without interruption. Fortunately, Mr. Tripp, in his presentation on September 9th, was interrupted by Ms. Wern eight times and Ms. Eastland two times. Without Mr. Peters at all calling him out of order. However, when Mr. Tripp said something at the end of the council meeting, when Mrs. Warren was speaking, he was called out of order. So there's a complete, complete difference as far as how we're handling public speakers as opposed to council speakers. So I would appreciate it in the future. I think it might have just been an oversight. Give everybody the benefit of that. But that when the public speaks, we should be allowed to speak our five minutes. I think that that's appropriate since we have no other time during the meeting but those five minutes to speak, that we have that time uninterrupted without being interrupted by any councilman or councilwoman. And I do think that Mrs. Wern's comment about can we have a little bit of comments, I mean Larry's coming up here or anybody making comments, I think we ought to respect those comments. And if she doesn't think they're relevant, fine. But what you think and what you say should be two different things. So I think that was totally inappropriate on her part. Hopefully, that's a learning experience for everybody. I know in the heat of the moment, sometimes things happen and you say things that you kind of regret and you wish you didn't say. So, I would just like September 9th really to be a learning moment and we can move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Platt, 101 Lyre. I have a question that I would like answered when you go around at the end of tonight's council meeting. The question is from Mr. Deorio from New York Hall. Since it has been three months since the city surveys has been submitted, when are the results with comments going to be on the city's website? So far, I haven't seen them. Maybe I've missed them. What is your timeline? Three months seems like a long time to me since they are ready to be downloaded. I appreciate your response to this communication file, which is very important to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes, sir. I authorized our intern to put those out on the website last week. He works Tuesdays and Thursdays. So I'll see if he can put those out. It's not going to be out till tomorrow. Okay. Thank you.
Marion Boston, 327 Weber Avenue. I have a message for Engineer Graham for on the record. Weber Avenue is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Marilyn J. Rowe, 308 Corder Street Northwest. This evening, I wish to speak to ordinance 74-2019, city and North Canton public records policy. I believe at last night's council meeting, this legislation was presented as nearing the public records policy of the Ohio Attorney General. While I am in favor of updating policy and posting that policy at City Hall, I find the cost structure punitive, and I would guess a nightmare to administer. Those of us who request a public record know the first hurdle to securing that record is having the Law Director approve the release of those requested records. And if this pay structure is adopted, city employees will have to determine how many of the documents have been scanned, what the final cost will be. Then, the requester will make a trip to City Hall to pay for these documents, and the city employee will make a receipt for the total amount due. Once this process is completed, the Requestor's documents can be sent via email. This seems extremely cumbersome. Could this update in policy have anything to do with the city losing in the July 2019 mediation with the Ohio Court of Claims regarding citizens being denied public records? For me, there are two pillars of democracy, free and fair elections, and securing public records without interference. If the city wants to update the public records policy to a one-page document, fine. But in this update process, eliminate any and all fees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
If I may, Melanie, the one-page poster is simply the summary. And the two-page policy in the area you mentioned regarding the cost?
Yes.
That's exactly what you said. Nothing there has changed in the current policy since 2015. And you mentioned losing, that Court of Claims case was dismissed.
If anyone else wishing to address council, Chuck?
Tookoff Mark, 307 Fairview Street, San Diego, North Canton, Ohio. I'd like to rebut that last comment. It was not dismissed. Mr. Fox conceded to provide nearly all the records that I had been waiting weeks and months for. So nothing was dismissed. It was negotiated and mediation, and the records were provided. So that is untrue. As far as the changeover to a new records policy, Mr. Fox blessed this by stating he was recreating the state's model record policy. That is untrue as well. He has inserted in there, this model records policy, a sentence allowing for scanning fees for black and white and color. The state does not sanction that, does not even have that in their model records policy. I'm talking about 74-2019. This time of year, citizens are welcome to participate in our democratic process at this time, given the fact that we have a general election in less than a month. But sadly, that apparently is not the extent of citizen involvement that is desired by our citizens under ordinance 74-2019, which proposes that citizens pay a scanning fee for public records when the records are emailed as an attachment. I have a survey of local municipalities and their policies regarding charges for sending public records via email attachments. And Melanie, do you want to hand that out?
I did.
Of the 20 municipalities I have contacted, 14 have responded. Many of them are honoring the public state, so they were closed. 14 of them unanimously have no charges to scan and charged for sending out that public record as an attachment to an email. I also see the remaining six municipalities straying from that unanimous policy. I will also tell you, I've spoken to an attorney with the Ohio Attorney General's Office, and they practically laughed at that on the phone with a proposal that we're going to charge a one-cent scan for black and white copies and nine cents for color. It's kind of like the difference between calling one of you up on the phone, my cellphone, and or calling you up on my landline. Do you know the difference? I don't think so. There is no difference. That scanning machine has no idea what it's scanning. It's just ones and zeros, and there should be no charges. Now, you rely on some empty fees and permits because you want to be like everybody else. So if you want to be like everybody else, you will forget these scanning charges. You don't need to be putting up barriers to your citizens to participate and know what their government is doing. All right, that's the first one. Secondly, regarding ordinance 77-2019, the zone parcel out on Schneider. Two of you served with me with Kathy Mabel years ago. And if you want to ever hear Kathy Mabel hit on the warpath, start talking about spot zoning, because this is exactly what this is. You can look it up. It's against state law. You're taking these two parcels surrounded, all by residential. On the north side, it's R-70. To the east, it's R-50. And the parcel itself is within a R2 family. Now, I know maybe there's an interest in driving and making that entire east Schneider business, but there's no reason to reduce the enjoyment of people's homes. You change that over to underlying office building, you change the, a myriad of things. It allows signage, probably increased lighting, increased activity. Now, not to deny the property owner some protections. There's a number of things you could do. And what you could do is give a variance for that owner or a special use permit to continue. continue what has gone on there for years. Do not change the underlying zone. You're destroying what's going on there.
Thank you, Mr. Otter.
Thank you.
Thank you. President, I might say, while we were on the breakthrough, we went to our website in the quickest way is to enter the search box, type in 2019 community survey, results pop right up. So it was put on there by scoop when I announced.
All right, anybody else wishing to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the whole business. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, third reading ordinance 57-19.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment chapter 1171, administering powers and duties to codify ordinance to the city of North Canton, specifically section 1171-106, schedule of fees pertaining to permits and fees for cement work on private property and the public way.
Thank you. Chairman.
Yes, I don't think we have any questions about this.
All right, I just want to make sure you're confident in my survey can hear you.
Okay. All right, if you have further questions, go ahead and wait for adoption.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, second reading ordinance 67-19? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
In ordinance amendment chapter 935, water lines and hydrants, codified ordinances of the city of North Canton, specifically section 95.02, connection charge other than by assessment.
We discussed this in our town committee meetings, it's something to do with cookouts, connection cookouts only, so I agree with this, or approval of second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you. On the new business, we have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 68-19.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Second. In ordinance authorized, the mayor of the city of North Canton, upon board control approval, entered into a contract by in between the city of North Canton and the city of Canton, for purposes providing legal representation in the Canton Municipal Court for prosecution of criminal cases at a total cost not to exceed $22,000 per year, for a period of two years beginning January 1st, 2020, through December 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Chairman.
We have done this annually over the past number of years, and it just helps us come across a lot with the prosecution in Canton Municipal Court. Any questions? Can you second your thought?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 69-19?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries.
Second. In ordinance authorized, the mayor of the city of North Canton, upon a pre-current council board of control, entered into a contract for administering self-insured health insurance program for city employees for the period of December 1st, 2019, through November 30th, 2020, declaring the same to the emergency council.
Chairman.
Now, this is about our insurance, we've been out the band and we received.
We've had three fits from that, they've been up to 27 different insurance companies.
Okay. Do you want to say anything about it?
Um, no, well, I'm saying, last week we met over the phone link, we did all the numbers and talked about some finances that we have, working stuff. We did. The only thing I'll just reiterate is, this is actually a lower increase than we've seen the past couple of years, which is a good thing. And we continue to monitor our costs all the time.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to clarify that we're giving permission for you to enter into a contract, but you're not actually choosing the person with contract or your contract.
Wait. Correct, board of control.
Awesome, thank you. Can you second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to suspend those councils for three readings? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt other suspension of rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 70-19?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance authorized, the mayor of the city of North Canton, through the board of control, entered into a professional services agreement for architectural services for the North Canton Dawgwood Park Expansion Project at a cost not to exceed $132,000, declaring the same to the emergency.
Chairman.
So this ordinance in the bottom ordinance, a cost for looking at professional architecture fees for the parks. And I have to say, after we're on an all-day bus tour last week, we should start counting. And it's just so neat to see all the different parks. And I know some of the nights that we have received from the state, Jackson is definitely moving forward with theirs, American Theater Project, and in fact, we really started about our sale. I would want to move forward on this, so I can check out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to suspend those councils for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt other suspension of rules. Ordinance 70-19?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 70-19?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance authorized, the mayor of the city of North Canton, through the board of control, entered into a professional services agreement for architectural services for the North Canton Dawgwood Expansion Project at a cost not to exceed $31,000, declaring the same to the emergency.
Chairman.
And just one clarification for addition, last week people had asked about the fees, and it was about 10%, when we looked at it, which is a very significant fee. So, but the other questions are missing, we'll check them out.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to suspend those councils for three readings?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second to adopt other suspension of rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 72-19?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance authorized, the mayor, on behalf of the city of North Canton, entered into performance bond agreement in the amount of $611,138 between the city and McKinley Apple Road Development Limited for construction of street, stormwater management facilities, drainage improvements, and sewer improvements at Sanctuary Base for Construction Project.
Thank you. Chairman.
So, the next ones that I'm going to talk about is about performance bonds. And sidewalk performance bond, Tiffany talked about those in the recap last week, and just finished with those projects, and because it's the next phase that has to happen. Any other questions or concerns with this one?
Yes, I have a question for, uh, bond is references stormwater management. And I would assume that we are going to review very carefully those plans, given the kind of stormwater issues we're having at General Lane.
Right, we've taken a look at that, and the pennies in the basins that are already existing out there. It's all sort of designed with that in mind, but yes, they provide a stormwater management report that's signed and sealed by their engineer.
Okay, and it's your conclusion that these informations are adequate?
Yes, looking at it, it was in order for the drainage calculations. Without formative myself, their hypothesis, I guess, modeling, was the industry standard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion to drop? No, hold on, I have, I do have a question regarding that one. As far as retaining the water, do they also address how fast they're releasing the water downstream?
That's taken care of with the outlet structure?
Okay.
Of the series of ponds that are out there? And that's all kind of addressed with those calculations? And there's a pipe out of the, that really doesn't change, I guess, it's a, it's a valley, whatever size it is off the top of my head, but pretty much only so much water is going to be escaping once, that's the whole idea, that in a large rain event, the ponds fill up and water stored there, and then it's still released at a certain rate.
The reason I ask, we have some resumes down in that area, but, but you're aware?
Right, downstream erosion and whatnot.
Yeah, so, I mean, as long as we are cognizant of that, we got, we have to address that situation, we have to fix that at some point.
Right.
Too exasperated.
Right, yeah, I wouldn't think this new development is exasperating that, the water's still getting, it might just get to quicker, because hell, they have on discharge of the the pre-development rate. It's big, but the way the stormwater regulation three, the, the pre-development runoff has to equal the post-development runoff. And that's why the difference is maintained in the pond.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Would you jump a re-motion?
I would, please.
A motion about first reading ordinance 70-19?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Thank you. Take your round. We have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 73-19?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. Tim.
In ordinance authorized, the mayor, on behalf of the city of North Canton, to accept the sidewalk performance bond in the amount of $39,431 between the city and McKinley Apple Road Development, and accept the company mortgage deed for city life number 6874, thereby securing the bond for unnecessary work required to complete sidewalks in the Sanctuary Base for Construction Project.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman.
Any other questions on this one? Or comments on that topic? And then we'll drop.
Do you have a comment?
No.
Okay.
So I move, now second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion carries. May I have a motion in a second to read by title only, first reading ordinance 74-19?
So moved.
May I have a comment before we read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. You know, after really looking at this, and I've talked to Chuck, I apologize, he's the one that I've talked to on phone about this ordinance and updating current policy, I think it is sort of crazy that we're going to charge people to email documents. And even before looking at this, and I appreciate all your work as far as what other municipalities are doing, I think I tend to agree, why are we charging to scan and email documents? Why, why are we, first of all, wasting our time? I would quite honestly think our time is much worth a pullout more than what we're charging to have somebody scan it and email it to residents. I think our time can be better spent. I think it's just open, honest government, why wouldn't we just scan documents in this day and age, other things done digitally and so much easier? I think we should still charge for paper, because we have paper, paper. I think we still charge for discs, if they don't bring their own discs, then they want to put on a disc. But I don't see any reason behind charging for emailing and scanning.
And without making a judgment or recommendation either way, we're simply passing the cost that's passed on, it's, it's a cost that's in the contract every time that, that knee arm on the copier, they call it clicks, not necessarily that it's going to copy, it's going to scan, or that it's a fact, there's still a fee that's charged, and it's just simply passing that fee on that the, essentially the taxpayers. And quite honestly, for the vast amount of these person of charge.
I don't consider that memorable.
Yeah, I concur, I concur, it's free to take it out, do it for, for scanning, just eliminate the charge of scanning.
Well, if I could add a quick to, you too. All right, so we have four pulled out, but, uh, you charge for a scan and copy, whatever that charge is, 90 cents. How many people are going to touch that 90 cents? It's going to be a receipt to be written out, and this could be a process that would take 15, 20 minutes, and it's enough to collect 90 cents, and person that's handling that's making 17, 18, 20, whatever, whatever they make an hour. So I, I totally agree with you on that one. I think this is our one main straight points, I see no reason why we can't just scan. And I would even go even further, if we, we find the ball, we call it a little flash track. Well, if they want to, they have a little flash track, they wanted to come up with it, so, there's a lot of different things, we'll, we'll talk later. Lot, lot of different things, lot of different ways we could go, but, uh, yeah, I, I agree with you on that, thank you for bringing that up, Marcia.
Marcia, so what you're saying is the color scan only, the one cent for black and white, and was it 90 cents for color? So the scan, you're saying we won't charge that, but if we do scan a color copy, black and white copy, and print it out in each toner, then those are the copies that we pay for, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
A hard copy.
Any hard copy? And the other thought I had was, do they want to put a limit on it? Thoughts just off the top of my mind, do we, are we worried that maybe we get to a point where somebody's, we could have charged them 50, $50 for, in the year because they've asked for so many documents? Do we want to put a number on it, or each resident? Or do we want to just say, this is crazy, and we're going to?
Well, Pat, you would have a history with you of receivables? Give us a number.
Yes, well, given that the administration is the entity that's going to be involved in executing one of the decisions that you made, I appreciate the opportunity to weigh in. As far as keeping track of the number of public records, we did, we do keep an inventory. We're required to keep a record of what we give people, and then they ask for it again, and they are hands-on, and give it to them in a much more efficient manner, rather than having to go find files all over again. I think with a lot of the referring to last week of governing, the cost of the scanned images and whatnot, you have to understand the nature of a copy machine contract, and so when that machine is running, there's a charge for it. If I'm printing on paper, and I'm printing black and white or public, there's a different fee that's assessed to us by the nature of our contract. Over the time that I've been here, Laura has been very helpful in helping us navigate that expense, and we have automatically tuned all of our PCs to print in black and white all the time, to keep that cost down, because there's a higher cost for copy. The same is true for the scanner. As far as the copy machine company goes, that's, the document is running through that device, it knows whether it is color or black and white, and so we, in essence, get a bill for that, and if we go above our allotment of what we contracted for, then it's an additional, an additional cost considered. So whether you're actually printing it on paper or not, there's still a cost considered in the work, in position that I'm hearing, I'm sympathetic to that, we don't want to be tripping over dollars to pay that down. And that's what, to me, it looks like you're doing, if we're going to have to track who requests it, but in order that they get a freebie down the road, we're going to be charged by, if we have to write out a receipt for 15 cents, a dollar, I have to balance that, I need, so I just write your receipt, I got to balance a ledger out, I'm going to straighten the side of that, ask you then, carry yours to the carriers to the finance department. Laura has employees that have the accounts that we actually brought over what is said on the receipt. And they have to incorporate it in their deposits, and it goes on and on and on. And then later on, we may have to reconcile our monthly receipts to make sure. There's all kinds of stuff with this. And I just would hate to see us spend a lot of time and resource tracking all this stuff down for what is incidental. There are some, we call it the cost of living business, C O B B. There are some individuals who request more than that, but I think the average, it's not going to be a financial burden specifically provided either. Documents, in my opinion, on paper, Laura will have products to pay.
I agree. Darryl, did you have a comment?
I did, yes. You know, I have to listen to Pat. And again, if we think about this from an operations, literally track the money that, the time that we have to spend to manage this, the money can be cut off in a sense. It might be better if we look at this this way. First of all, let's just make the documents free, no matter what format they come in. Taking a step back, we know that our document demand is not particularly heavy. Pat already knows that. As Marcus thinks, we heard him say, things change, we can change, change back. But I would recommend if we do this, let's waive the copy fee. Or the, or the, just waive it, they can go away. If we provide someone with a disk or a jump drive, they have to use ours, they'll have to pay for that. And we can decide which one to do, let's just, that's the important thing. But I would just stay away from the document fee. If they have, if you want to charge for a jump drive or a disk, because we have to control that. We can't use someone else's, right?
I would say that in as far as the jump drive or the disk, very few requests would necessitate the acquisition or such. I think most of this stuff could be emailed. But to the extent that then, you know, what you, discs that we buy, jump drives that we buy, you know, protect our network, what would love to something that will be targeted.
We would just, it's an industry.
So what's the cost you think that was spent and away from on that type? And we, I don't know, yeah, that is, just trying to listen to you.
I think I looked at, you know, just the stuff that I assume go through from some of our more frequent requests. There's, I think they have, what I assume go through, that could be different, but ten is it? Because some things don't get, I don't think they get routed to him because he comes from a different department, not through that. But, you know, it looks to me like we're under fifty requests. And one of those requests was for copies of residents from the council work process. So I think if you took that out, I was counting up megabytes, to me it's just incidental. I can't imagine that it's...
Can we budget some money for that? But then, can you just...
The one place that we do actually receive some money from public records is through the police department because pretty frequently people do come in to get copies of police reports, which they typically get on paper because they're coming in power for insurance purposes or something. It's not a tremendous amount of money, but it's pretty frequent. But again, that's a paper, you know, like I said, copy, something like that.
Speaking strictly of scanning copies, correct?
Right, we're not, we're still in charge of copies, paper copies.
Derek, Derek. There was one sent a page for black and white, and the vast majority, as courtesy, the city waves. And I think the recommendation of grading all of the costs is reasonable. We get about, an administration about a hundred roughly, not counting the police department. And that the vast amount of those are waived as a courtesy. I think if you're going to waive all of those, that perhaps we'd maybe one sentence for the discretion for the administrator for a cost that may be unreasonable for, say, the taxpayers to bear. And they don't come along that often, but within the past week, I've had one that's in excess of fifteen hundred documents. And so that one perhaps would be...
Could you do it where you, at a certain amount, they would have to purchase one of those zip drives at a certain level, say, I don't know, what's the number that's overwhelming, a hundred?
It depends on, one of the issues is, is the amount of time for copying. If we can put through the document feeder, it goes, of course, very quickly. But if it's an unusual size, say, the traffic picking, the only way to make the copy of the traffic picking is to manually do it. To lay it down on the copier, then put the eight and a half by eleven blank, put around that, and then make that copy. And then if that needed to be scanned, then you have to scan that copy. And so an excessive amount of those, say, in irregular size, might be unreasonable for the manpower of the time to make those copies, not really for the actual cost of them.
Alright, so if I can object, I think what you're basically asking is for some sort of fail-safe sentence in there where it would get a very certain amount. How about we do this in the interest of time? I believe, Marcia, motion to amend?
Correct.
You've already amended, motion to amend. Why don't we, motion to amend this reading to pull out all the fees? This is going to be on three readings, it's not emergency. If we need to bring it back to committee during the next committee meeting, or if you guys put together some language to create that fail-safe, we can add that at a later time, that works for the rest of council.
It'll work with these people, they know more about it than we do.
Right.
Let's work with that.
Did we make motion to use?
We did not.
We have a motion.
We have a motion, that's...
We can't amend it until we read it, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. I do have some...
You can have a motion table right now.
No, let's...
Let's keep it, I'll tell you what, let's do this, let's have a motion of first reading. Let's read it to the record, and kind of where the discretion, discussion has gone. And...
Put it on committee. Put it on committee, let's talk about it.
Let's just, let's, uh...
Somebody's a motion outside to read.
To read, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Jeff?
In ordinance repealing and replacing city of North Canton's public record policy, Act five, chapter one oh seven, North Canton qualified ordinances will be updated in most current policy and summarize poster attached to and incorporate herein. As you can see in the...
Okay, with regular frank, we've had discussions regarding that. We want to amend the first reading to reflect removal of fees for printing and scanning these documents.
Correct.
Motion to amend?
Motion, do I have a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, with that, I...
First reading answered.
Has been made.
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries. And Laura will put this on the next committee.
Thank you, thank you, Marcia.
Okay, at this time, may I have a motion in a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance seventy-five dash nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Jeff?
In ordinance authorizing the mayor, we have the city of North Canton enter to a successor collective bargaining agreement between the city and the North Canton service declared more employees and declaring the same in accordance.
Yeah, you have a contract, appreciate all your hard work.
That's good.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Nope.
Okay.
Nice to hear that.
Yeah, thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. We have a motion in a second to suspend the rules of council for three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And finally, a motion in a second without unsuspension of rules.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, we have a motion in a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance seventy-six dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Jeff?
In ordinance amended ordinance number fifty dash zero three, zoning ordinance in the city of North Canton, corresponding tax map, change the zoning district of the parcel situated at Southwest intersection of East Maple Street, State Route forty-three, Stark County, current tax parcel number one zero 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 six six zero zero, from general business district to departmental merchant institutional, eight nine.
Alright, thank you, Chairman Kiesmer, Chairman of the Kiesmer.
Yes, this is the parcel, the old VP building out on the corner of East Maple and Market Streets, currently owned by Walsh University, which is changing the zoning to Maple. The same as the Westwood University. Any questions, please, Aaron? I'm rushing without this first reading.
Second move. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Finally, motion, a motion in a second to read by title on the first reading ordinance seventy-seven dash nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both. Motion carries, member Fonte abstaining.
And ordinance amended, ordinance number fifty dash zero three, zoning ordinance in the city of North Canton, corresponding tax map, to change the zoning district of two parcels situated at River Lloyd Schneider Street Southeast, Stark County, current tax parcel number nine-two-zero-one-eight-five-two and nine-two-zero-one-eight-five-three, from two-family residential to office buildings.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Kiesmer.
Yes, I have taken into consideration what Chuck said. I'm looking at the map online, or zoning map. And I just, I want everybody to be clear because we don't have the map in color and you can't... It's way too hard to see what was copied. And I usually have the map in here, so I really do need to get my map back. Remember, we talked about that? So I need to get my map back. But online is actually very nice. So right behind South Main Street, on Schneider, is currently zoned, oh my gosh, I gotta go back and forth, I apologize, because it's so small on here. Is, oh... Is Main Street Business, and then it runs into GBB, and then it runs into R two F. So there is a few parcels between the GBB and the, what we're proposing, the office building that is R two F. So I understand where he's coming from as far as spot zoning. This property does sit on a corner, which I think is, makes it a little bit unique. And it's been there forever, and it's been a business forever, and it doesn't belong enough to F. However, that's where it landed all those years ago, and we haven't changed the zoning. So I, I feel strongly about spot zoning as well, but I think this building's been there so long and has been operating as office building for so long, it would be unfair to the owner of the property to allot in what he's already been doing for forty or fifty years. With the understanding that you can't get a variance because it still wouldn't be enough to be able to put the money into the property to make the improvements. Therefore, if we didn't rezone it, we again are taking away his rights as a property owner to run it as a business, just because it sort of sits in this really weird scheme on Schneider. And Schneider isn't very unique, the road as well, because there are several businesses on it, zoned office business, and then there are a lot of homes as well. So it's a little mixture, which a lot of North Cantonians at this point. But I guess everybody needs to be in a comfort zone as far as, I would say it's spot zoning, but it certainly isn't, you know, GBB and office building. It's GBB, R two F, office building. And maybe our hopes are in the future that that R two F becomes GBB or office building. That sort of only makes sense if you look at it, you know, five or 10 years from now, there's, though, there's a few homes and a couple duplexes right there. You know, maybe I hope that someday the city to buy those and develop that whole spot as office building, and who knows what could go in there. So I think we're trying to future think, but we're also trying not to take away the property owner's rights. So I think, you know, we got to come out into it, and that's where I land. I think I don't want to take away the property owner's rights because he's been operating as a business all these years.
I agree, to read Mr. Perry's letter, his own submission. I think a lot of times you put weight in what's going on in the neighborhood in the past, and I try to reach out to a couple members, where she's had an complaint, it is unique zoning there. You know, there's a dental officer since moved up, you know, on South Main. There was an audio kind of recording building there in the past that we've looked at, and it actually helped us, like, years ago, and some management needed. So it's unique in that sense. It's not like we're turning it, it's residential only, and we're turning it into an R two or general business, that sort. So I would defer to the council, more council person than for their input on this.
And at this point, I haven't heard anything, the note of plates, and there are a lot of businesses that even when you go around the street, there's a park shop on the left side, and they're just different things.
We've got three reviews to look at, this is first reading.
When I grew up there, I hated that color. Because that was my pediatric, pediatric, pediatrician. And I used to cry, and my mom used to drive me there because I knew I was going to get shot. So that has been a business for a long time. And it's a pro-business movement.
And the allegation that it's spot zoning, our Ohio Courts of Appeal finds spot zoning, as Grandma used to say, rare as Hennessy. In fact, regarding townships, there's only been two cases in the history of recorded law in the state of Ohio finding spot zoning. So it is very rare, looking at the character of the neighborhood. And spot zoning is giving someone something that's not provided to anyone else. And if you just stand at that property and look east and west, you'll see eight to 10 professional echo service offices. And that very fact means it's not spot zoning.
I agree.
After that, a motion for that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstain. Motion carries, six oh, member Fonte abstains. Okay, at this time, I need a motion and a second to move into executive session, council and director of finance only. This is to consider the employment and compensation of public employees. The executive session will not be open to the public.
Check of the public, can it last long, or are we going to leave, hang on this? What's the...
What do we...
Well, there's the committee average at the end of this meeting, so...
You think it's 10 minutes, 15?
Ten, sorry.
Ten, 15, I said.
Okay. Uh, motion to move on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we'll call it.
Oh, sorry, yes. Laura, will you please roll call that to the business.
Sure. Peters?
Yes.
Bolt?
Yes.
Fonte?
Yes.
Bolts?
Yes.
Waren? Tess? Eastland? Yes. Serrano?
Yes.
Second time. Okay, seven oh, we are in executive session. Return in about 15 minutes.